Okay. All right. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the November fifth meeting. Minutes of the October fifteenth meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion in a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial statement and payment of the bills, do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, Ray, Lou, you have a couple items?
One or two items I have, the ordinance seven, two thousand twenty-five. It's already been a public hearing by the board and it was introduced as subject for adoption tonight. And it was a amendment to the P O D ordinance, the P O D section of the zoning ordinance, specifically adding the language, "Any deviation from this section requires consistency with section one point one must be approved by both the Elton planning commission and the mayor commissioners set forth under section eleven." This is just a minor addition to the P O D ordinance, so if can amend the voting codes and things like that, make it un-recommended if the board adopt ordinance seven, two thousand twenty-five.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance seven dash two zero two five? That's a little bit of a change in the article. Eleven, plan development, section one point one four B, plan unit development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, I have resolution R eleven, two thousand twenty-five. This two vehicles, two thousand fifteen for two thousand seventeen for, and a list of equipment from Public Works. That's either worn out, mixed up, or recommended for disposal. And we take all this equipment to Ritchie Brothers in the northeast. And we usually function, I mean, we receive quite a bit of money for all this surplus equipment, so I recommend that the board pass resolution R eleven, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion to accept resolution R eleven dash twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? I have a couple questions. Hey, Dan, you're, you've got three, three whacker units on there. Help me understand, what's a BS five hundred?
They're just regular compacters, that's all. They're just all, they've been sitting on the truck for a while, so we just, we figured it's better just to get rid of, you know, too much of them, so.
Okay. The chipper, is it about on its last leg?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's the oldest one, yes, that's the oldest one, we have two of them. So you, sorry, let's never look. All right, that's okay.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. That's all I have. All right, thanks, Lou. Let's see. Tyler, you and I, I might be letting the cat out of the bag, but we had a little conversation this morning, and I really appreciate the finance department moving in a, in a, in a positive direction on this, and it's, just to bring the board up to date a little bit. Tyler and his team's been working on, working on a method to be able to notify residents if their, if their water is constantly running. It would give us an alert very quickly to be able to save the residents tons of money. And we've had, residents has had lateral breaks in their, in their home underneath before the meter, or right after the meter, and they'll get bills of two and three thousand dollars, and we do our best to try to help them out in those situations. But we're going to try to be proactive on this. So I was mentioning to Jean over here to my right, and one of the, one of, one of the parts that you mentioned to me was, at some point, we might be able to even text the homeowner once we know that those flows are moving over a twenty-four hour period, and they get a notification that says, hey, your, your water is running twenty-four hours a day, you might want to get a plumber out there to check it or whatever. What we might want to try is, on our ordinance that we're building out, kind of ask the people to, if there's a form that we could set, put online, that they could update their account if they want to receive text messages from us. It might, it might help us get some of those here in a short window. I'm sure every landlord will sign up immediately. You know that, I guarantee that one. But I love it, I absolutely love it. I think that that's, that's, that'll be, very happy about that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Very happy about that. I wanted to mention the other day, and, and it, and it, and it, I guess I want to start out, it bothers me a little bit that in our town, we have, and I don't want to say I'm picking on anyone, but I am picking on someone, or a team here. Dan, our Public Works guys are the, are the absolute ambassadors of our town. Our residents see them all the time, and when they shine, everyone shines. And the other day, I was coming, heading back toward Heritage Drive, and there was a bag of trash kind of in the middle of the road, like right on the side. I went by it, I went by it, and I was going up to turn around to come back. I passed the Public Works truck, they went by it, and I'm thinking, wow. They should, my hope would be that they would pick up any type of debris that they would see in the road in that situation. So as I was turning around, guess who was already there and picking up the trash? Commissioner Pinear. I want to say that, I, I want to applaud you for doing that. Right? I mean, I want to applaud you for that. But every member of our team should be doing things like that. If you, and, and I really, it seems like we need to do more of those things. If we see, I know Louis does it all the time. Louis will see stuff, and he'll pick it up and throws it in the back of that truck. But if our Public Works folks are going by that, they need to pick that stuff up. And, and it doesn't matter if it's even not on a town road. I would ask them to pick that stuff up. It just makes the town much better of a place. Hopefully, it's, hopefully it was an isolated incident, and they're gonna, they was gonna pull over and get it, but Earl, is that?
It was on High Street, people were going around, it was like three cars went around before I noticed it, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Certainly, I applaud him at this time, and for the mere reason that we had told Public Works over the years, I'm not just talking about now, that that should be one of the responsibilities, and not just Public Works, I think Louis mentioned, all employees of the town of Elton, if you are out and you see that, you know, it represents, as you said, the totality of, of this office, the mayor commissioners and, and the workers of the town, so again, Earl, thanks.
I think, I think we all feel that way. That's all I have. Jean? Anything this evening? I wanted to say how well you did at the Halloween parade, and your, and your outfit was phenomenal, and the parade went great. Thank you.
I, I wanted to thank the Alliance, because you had almost three hundred children, didn't you come back for?
At least.
For the gift bags that you put together?
Yeah.
And, and it went so smoothly?
Ran out.
You ran out, yeah. So it has grown even more. I like the setup, I, I think it just went very smoothly, and you guys did a great job. Thanks for making me go. I'm kidding, I, not go, I always go, I always watch it from a
For making you work.
A remote area where people can't see everybody, yeah. It was fun, thank you.
Earl?
The only thing, Dan, I think there might have been an oversight on a request from us, is that you all were supposed to do an inventory. I guess it was never done, but if you put that on your radar again?
Yes, sir.
Precisely that. And then, gee, this is not putting you on the spot, I'm coming to the meeting tonight, and as I stopped right there at High and South Street, there was a sheriff's car parked angled with a stop sign everywhere you stop, and there were some guys out there, you know, talking at the barber shop, and he was going to say something else. That should have been a no-no. I had mentioned to somebody that I knew that you need to tell them to move. So an incident like that, well, I don't mind having it, but what would be a good suggestion? I mean, they have their territory, Elton has its territory, but that's a no-no. In particular, you got a stop sign there, you got one of the type vehicles there, which is actually barking, I mean, blocking part of that sign, and you've got traffic that is still moving on one side.
So this is a parked, unarmed vehicle?
No, he was in his vehicle, right.
It was a sheriff's car, and he was facing the wrong direction.
Oh, you know, you saw it too?
I saw it, coming the wrong way, and he pulled in front of the barber shop. So if, now, if he'd been on the other side of the road and parked and walked across, I don't think it'd been a problem, but he was in the wrong, it made it look like there was an incident going on at the barber shop.
On whether.
And I don't think there was.
No, he, I don't know who the guy is, but there had been a vehicle of that type from the sheriff department at other times crossed that same, crossed that same way, which is wrong. I should have taken a picture and then let his boss see, because I don't have any problem with having it, I'm just.
He can tell if a little too long, um, he can certainly do that, too.
And, you know, certainly a guy like that wouldn't want to be questioned by one of us either, because, you know, it can be thrown back at you, because now he's having his conversation, and he's probably a good conversation, but, you know, he doesn't want his title to reduce it any, right, from some Joe Blow himself or somebody else. But I'm just letting you know, I should have taken a picture of that. But if it happens again, I'll take care of it.
You could ask him, what's, you know, what's going on, tell him, tell him, so he's not sure.
I'm not even going to tell him that, I'll find out. Thank you very much, I'm just throwing that at you. I'm done.
Earl?
I want to thank Lisa and her, her crew for the Halloween parade. I had a chance to stay there with some of the best, and the judges and everybody, and I had a good time. Parks and Rec are really stepping up their game, because they've been, they've been actually at them, which every night of the week, and it's got a lot of activities going on over at the Parks and Rec, so I give Mary kudos for, for their organization over there, so that's basically all I have. Thanks.
Robert?
I was not able to attend the Halloween parade, but I've been hearing reviews, and I would definitely be there next year. I went by
We're not thinking of it next year, cancel it for next year. When you guys show up, we're done.
I went by Rise and Grind, and, and are they going to have a grand opening on Friday?
Yeah, Saturday morning.
Saturday morning?
They are, I had asked them if they would postpone it just a bit to get some people more notice, but it's a special day, it's for grandmother's birthday, and so they want to sort of recognize that, so they're doing it Saturday morning at nine AM.
I'll be there.
Perfect.
I know we're all looking forward to having you in town. That's all I have. All right, very good. There was one other comment I wanted to make. I was truly still waiting for an answer from the delegates' office. I did receive today at one fifty-four. Nothing confirmed yet, but we've been talking to some of our capital budget folks. The description purpose of the bond bill was luckily written pretty broad, so we're hoping there's some wriggle, wiggle room to use it for feasibility. So I'll know a little bit more. This is the bond bill that we received for the Frenchtown Works property. But I still haven't got a firm answer from the board on that, and it's been, I know, two weeks, maybe three weeks, but as soon as he gives me the answer, everyone will know the answer. Okay, with that, we open up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the town.
We have a lot coming up in the town of Elton over the next few weeks with the holidays coming up. Wednesday before Thanksgiving, we have the Turkey Truck Bar Draw, which is always a, a big draw for people. And then Small Business Saturday, last year, the Alliance started a small vendor event in our building. It's small, because it's in our building, but we really saw for the inaugural year last year that every single person that walked out of the door had a bag in their hand, so we really want to support these small artists and vendors. And then first and second Friday are both events in December, and we'll talk about those next month. So tree lighting on the first Friday in December.
One stuck up here.
Oh, and Mr. Masmiando is going to be redoing our Halloween display out front to make sure that we have winter holiday murals for people to be shopping in.
Public Works dropped off some panels for me yesterday. Won't be long.
So if you really want something in front of Witch's Groom or the Batwing, go soon.
Very good. Anything else?
Probably, but.
All right, anyone else have anything to say? Yes, yes, sir, do you want me to approach her from here? You can approach and say your name and address and, and introduce the lady next to you.
Hello, everyone. This is my beautiful wife, Julie. I always wanted to do this, so I want to sit down.
Just fine, yeah. Fine, please.
Hey, you can sit down. You weren't here for the announcement. Yes, sir. All right, thank you for the speaking opportunity. So we were awarded the landscaping contract this year. I'm Rob, I'm the owner of Scott's Landscaping. I just wanted to address you guys and just give you kind of like, think of how the year went and all that good stuff. We wanted to take the opportunity to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity and awarding us the bid. We have made some really good relationships because of it, you know, board, mayor, and the Elton Alliance, everything has gone really good with our donations and all that stuff, but we would like to continue that moving forward regardless how it goes, if we were to go to bid again next year, because we would like to bid again.
Very good. Well, I will tell you, I, I think you guys did a great job. I was very pleased. Now, I haven't seen to round up, I, I haven't talked to Public Works to find out, maybe a different view, but I, I don't know. But everything that I saw, you guys did a great job. Very pleased with it, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I think, I would almost say that they feel the same way. And I would like to figure out a way that we could extend this. Now, that's something that we'll have to talk to our attorney with, being a, a contract like that, with that certain dollars amount, I don't, we'd have to put that out on bid, wouldn't we, Louis?
Serious money.
Yeah, two hundred, almost three hundred thousand, so. So I'd say that we'll have to, by our charter, put that on bid, but I'd like to start that process sooner than later, and make it a little more simpler than we did last year, maybe just kind of a flat rate, and we know what we're doing, right? And any suggestions that you could give to the staff of how we put that thing out on bid, we certainly appreciate them.
Yeah, I, I would like to add in that we do extend this, make it a two, three-year commitment, based on, instead of one year, because based on what we, we all saw, it was an excellent job that was done, and instead of having to redo it again next year, I would like to do, just like we do to war and everything else.
Like the trust.
Give them a two- or three-year contract, not whoever it is, whoever bids it, gets it for a two, three-year project.
I would agree with that. Anything else?
No, it sounds good, but I do think that that bid needs to be done a lot more professionally the way that it was, because it took a little while in the beginning to put things together, and by task, it just wasn't put together correctly, and there was a lot of confusion, obviously. It starts from, say, April and goes all the way to December, you know.
The original bid that you bid on went from April to December, and that's what we originally bid on, and then what we had signed, which we were awarded the bid, went to October, which, we understand legality, but the way that the entire bid was written was not so coherent. I would say, first of all, it came down to tasks, because I was, the one in charge of billing and the one in charge of breaking down all the tasks, and the tasks were not, within the bid itself, were not very legible, there was no, there were some addresses, I'm not saying there were, there was very minimal addresses on there, which is fine, we figured we had, we overcame the gap to it, but when it came down to billing and the way that the town of Elton wanted it, obviously, we were going to sit here and comply and do what we need to do to appease the town of Elton, that's our job. But the bid itself was not up to standard when it came to that. We, I had to break it down in my own way, just to appease how they wanted billing, and how D V W, or finance, whoever it was, really wanted to build stuff, which is fine. I, I'm a smart girl, I can do that, but when it comes down to breaking it down for a bid, I feel like you really will.
Let me ask this question, you're, you're mentioning a bid to December, and you know our grass window is here. What, what, what other things could, could a, your business do from, let's say, October, if it was a year thing? If we put this thing out on bid from January one to December thirty-first for the next couple of years, what would you do during the winter time?
Uh, there's, there's actually a lot of services that we'd be able to offer, Mr. Mayor. We are fully capable of picking up sticks and branches, and even the stuff that's in the roadway, as far as your grass and all that, that, you know, sits for a long period of time, and sometimes maybe D V W just can't get to because they're well on staff, or what that is, but usually, it would probably, if it were to be a true contract, in my opinion, it would be from April to the end of November, you could say December, but it would say be the end of November. It would give you the opportunity to go through the parks, make sure that the mulch is getting raked properly, it's getting all cleaned up and prepped the correct way to get you into the season. Same thing in the beginning of the season, because, you know, even our commercial properties that we maintain, you know, we're in there in March because we're, you know, doing mulch beds, we're planting flowers, and, you know, like usually like this time around, we're planting tulips, because that way next spring, they, you know, they crop.
Okay.
But there, there's definitely stuff that we can absolutely, you know, offer. I think that we should, I mean, I know that what I would like to do, if we were to win a bid again, I would say next year, I would like to continue my flowers up and down Main Street. I would like to do some stuff here at the main buildings, you know, this is the home of Elton.
I was going to bring that up. I, I think the front of our building is.
You know, let, let us maintain it, and, you know, if there's weeds, we'll pull it, we'll plant, you know, seasonal flowers in there, so, you know, we're
Well, how do you do that? Does that work, does that come in as part of the bid, of package, or is that something separate?
You can if you want. Usually, we do a full maintenance contract with some people, now, this, this was just strictly for grass milling.
Right.
Now, we donate the flowers. Now, if that was, say, not again for next year, I would donate the flowers again, because I don't have a problem doing that. I want this town to look good, look like everybody else here, and sits here, and the audience, and all of that. We're all here for the same reason. But you could do it like that if you wanted to. You could add that into the contract, and you can say, hey, I would like to have flowers at, you know, this building, I would like
Certain properties have
Yeah. Like even some of our neighborhoods that, you know, we, I, I've definitely learned a lot about the town during this, this season, and, you know, some of the neighborhoods that we do could definitely use some love. And I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, doing some small landscaping, so it stays nice, so when you're pulling into a neighborhood like that, that doesn't have the funds, we'd be more than happy to help, so.
Very good. Well, we'll make sure that when we look at this for next year, we'll make sure it's a little more simpler to take a look at and kind of
I've already got to take it out, sir, it's all right.
All right.
When did, when can we do this?
I think we put it out late last year, but I'd like to maybe put it out in, Dan, I'd like to try to get it out maybe in January or February, and then that way, everyone's prepared, they can get their equipment ready, they know what they need, and kind of go from there.
It certainly helps to, as you just mentioned, beautifying some areas in Elton, because anybody remember when we had to build out there, who was that came and planted those flowers?
Oh, I don't know who did it, yeah.
But it was a beautiful job. Earl, you remember?
They're wildflowers, weren't they?
They were.
Well, you guys have grown beautifully, the trees.
I wasn't, but, you know, one, one of the things that, and it's, I'm going to bounce around with you guys here a little bit, one of the things that we talked about probably a year ago was our neighborhoods that no longer have an H O A in them, and the Button Woods.
That's a big one.
The, the Turnquist, the areas where they're not getting the love, and they deserve to have some love over there, right? And those are, I'd love to see flowers in every neighborhood as you enter. You go into, when you drive into Montgomery County or Howard County, and you go into those neighborhoods, it's really, it looks great.
You'd be amazed, with a little bit of color and flowers, we'll be
And it's amazing.
Neighborhood and your personal feeling of actually having to drive through there.
Right. Well, there's, there's a big difference between our strip malls. Village of Elton is beautiful, every year, and it's maintained. The Big Up Mall looks abandoned, you know, big difference, but that, I, that's our, I don't know if that's something we would address as far as standards or not, but
We, we have villages
Oh, that was you, that does that? I did not know that. It's beautiful.
You're a great job there.
Yeah.
There was just snow there.
I, I didn't know that, I, so that gives us an idea, but, yeah, it's private property, so we can't control any of that anyway. But I was just curious how that would be incorporated.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you. But that's the main thing, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity and the relationships that we have built with the town, and it's, you know, it's good.
I appreciate what you guys did for us, when I sprang to go.
So thankful.
It's really glorious experience trying to work with you guys and figuring everything out and growing with you guys, and learning what's best for the town and what looks great for the town. I think it's been a great experience for not only us, but as a business, but for the town of Elton as well. We've seen a lot of positive feedback from a lot of the residents of the town of Elton who are really enjoying that Elton, specifically the center of Elton coming to life, and I think we gained a lot of gratitude. And we honestly thank you guys for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your award. How about that?
No, thank you.
All right, appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Alicia?
As a follow-up to a former conversation, where are we with the discussion on what's going to happen with trees and the flower beds and things on Main Street?
I don't know where we're at with that. Rob, you were in charge of that. But he's not saying anything, are they?
We are making progress.
You've got to have the right trees, for sure, right? I mean, because
We do.
Having trees, they have to be the right
The right one. We have failed miserably, I think, over the, over several years.
Where are we going to go with that? What do you want to do?
Let him work on it a little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, let me talk with Alicia, and who are we, who are we doing this with?
Well
No one.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Gene Center has a good handle on
I know we've met with.
Yeah, but you can do it with anybody, there's, there's nothing about her.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, she, she's very good about trees, I mean, if you need to get
I think that's part of the challenge, is that she doesn't want us to remove the trees. That's part of our challenge, she doesn't want us to remove any of those trees.
She wants the right trees.
Okay.
Planted.
The dead trees are all gone, if not mostly gone, right, Dan?
That's my mower, too, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it came down to the structure of what we were going to do with it, whether we were going to do the flat grates, what, yes, trees, no trees, yeah, Gene has a passion around what that could look like and what it should be, so certainly she should be involved in that conversation, but the last conversation I noticed that happened was when you had a contractor here discussing what the full Main Street could look like.
And that was huge.
Right, and the way we would like to go is with flat grates, and proper trees, if any. They do block the cameras.
Yeah, that's
We can go back to the flower bed, that's fine, you know, you can go back to the flower bed, it's fine also, maybe the board, what, probably needs to wait, yeah.
Let me talk with Jean about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll talk with her tomorrow.
Stuff like that, can't be
All right, anyone else have anything to say this evening? Come on down. Name and address, please.
My name's Dan Armour, I live at two hundred East Main Street. I've lived in my apartment for the last three and a half years and I've had no problem during that time. Recently, last week, I came out and my tire had been marked, which I assume was due to parking. So I called the town and I spoke to Kathleen, who is amazing, very friendly, informative. She advised that there had been an enforcement officer hired, which I was aware of. And I explained the situation and asked about parking permits. Previously, I had lived on South Street for a short time before I moved from there and I was issued a parking permit and when I left, I had to turn that in. She advised me that the only parking permits issued are on West Main Street and not on East. I contacted my landlord about this because we do not have any off-site parking. I live at the old Yodelbauer's building and years ago, Mr. Yodelbauer built on an addition and converted the upstairs into four apartments.
Which building is that? Help me understand.
Right on the corner of South and East Main.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're on the other side by where Downs?
Yes, right beside. There is a driveway there, but that belonged to Mr. Downs.
That's right, okay.
Access to that.
Okay.
When the town approved the permit for the renovation, the addition, it took away the off-street parking that was intended for that building. So we have no parking whatsoever.
So are we enforcing, Chief, are we enforcing that end of Main Street?
Yeah.
In Hunt? Okay.
I got to ask you, I'm not aware of any parking permits for West Main Street.
And you didn't say, I don't think he's the South
Yeah, I was told by Kathleen that there are parking permits for West Main.
There's a set block, I don't recall a block.
Is it further up past American Home and Hardware or something?
I believe it is farther, well.
Because I know that nobody in Meyer
I can pull the, the, I wonder how that
Okay, but back to you.
So my concern is that there are three tenants with cars, that we have no other alternative to park. My landlord said they could arrange something possibly for us to rent a space at Randall Jackson's attorney's office. My concern is a car sitting there overnight by itself would invite some kind of vandalism to it. I've had no problem with my car on East Main Street before. I would like to suggest the town incorporate a sticker parking permit that's valid for one year and it's up to the tenant to come in, show ID and a lease and that it expires every year in January and they could be color-coded, red for even year, blue for odd year and it would be up to the tenant to upgrade each year. And if the sticker is not valid, then they would be able to enforce parking violations, collect revenue. Would be easier for the enforcement officer to look to see, oh, there's a sticker, I don't have to worry about it, they have permits to park there. It would also reduce the amount of out-of-state cars of residents in the town and the areas that were a problem.
Very good point.
So with that, I'd like to propose that in certain areas and only for the buildings that tenants do not have off-street parking, that we could have a parking permit issued for one year, January to January. It doesn't require the town do anything because it's only good for one year and it's up to the tenant to renew them and if they don't, then that sticker is no longer valid and the enforcement will.
I love your suggestion and it does a couple of things, you know, I I'll share with you a quick story. My son moved to California, he moved out to Alameda, California, in the Bay Area. He moves out there, his first day, he's driving his car which has Maryland tags. He couldn't get a parking permit until he went and changed his vehicle registration to California. But as soon as he, because that's enticed a lot of times, like you just said. We have a lot of Delaware tags that might be living in some of these apartments which would encourage them maybe to, they want a permit, then they're going to have to change over.
Exactly.
Great idea.
That's my suggestion and again, I asked in the meantime, you know, what do I do? I talked to my landlord and I said, well, you know, if you do, take it into town, explain to them, see what can be done. Right now, I'm only know of three cars, because I kind of went up and down the street to see. And where we are, we're currently parking in front of John Downs' old office, which is vacant at this time, so there hasn't been a problem. And again, they have a driveway between the two buildings and they have parking in the back.
They have a lot of parking back there.
Yes, they do. And there was never a problem for John with us parking there when he was there, so.
Well, now it'll be, I think it's it's going to be the Veterans Center at that house. But I would say this, you know, my knee-jerk reaction, and I don't think we can take action on it by any means tonight, but I would say if we could offer you a parking, a temporary certificate, maybe for those three people or whoever comes in, we're happy to accommodate that. I think that would be better than getting you a ticket and then you go in to meet with the chief to try to get that taken care of, because we do want to take care of our residents.
Right.
We had a, we had a Lieutenant Comfort sent us an opinion. I haven't really
I didn't dive into it.
I didn't dive
But listen, we hear you loud and clear and we're going to try to get you an answer in the next couple of days.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, anyone on the Zoom meeting this evening have anything to say for the good of the town? Okay, we're going to have to have a closed meeting. Andy, who do you want in that closed meeting?
I think everyone that's there.
Okay, did you want the chief or not the chief?
Not the chief, please.
Okay, very good. All right, I'd like to ask the board, we're going to have a closed meeting to conduct collective bargaining negotiations. What's that? I need a motion to authorize a closed meeting, conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. And a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm way
We got a five-minute break and we will not reconvene. Thank you.